On November 18th, I call this meeting to order. We will call the roll, please.
Mr. Dawson?
Here we go.
President.
Mr. Ritt? Ms. Shillings?
Here.
Mr. Callie?
Here.
Mr. Pate?
Here.
Mr. King? Vice Mayor McDonald?
President.
Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Thank you. If you will stand with me and recite our prayer and pledge, please. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for the privilege and responsibility to serve the city of Fairview. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we deliberate and make decisions that will impact the lives of our citizens. May we always strive to be just, fair, and compassionate in our actions. Lord, unite our hearts and minds in the spirit of cooperation and understanding. Forgive our sins and guide us to make decisions that reflect your will and honor your name. We ask this in your name. Amen.
We would just signify the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
All right, do we have citizens' comments this evening?
Yes, we have six.
All right. As you step up to the podium, just give your name and address, and there is a three-minute limit per person.
The first one is Jody Lemain. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jody Lemain, and I live in 7231 Richveil Estates. About a month ago, I visited with Mayor Lisa about the issues that our development was having with the builder DRB Brightland Homes. To count, we have at least a dozen homes that have mold issues because, according to several inspectors, was caused by inadequate venting, drainage, and not sufficient encapsulation. We also have at least 12 homes that we know of with severe structural issues, like these are severe. Our house has roof trusses that are not even touching the roof. We have a huge sag in our roof and floors that don't have enough support that our 20-pound dog walks across and it's an earthquake. We were told by the builder not to put anything heavy on the floor. This is a house that's less than a year old. Mayor Lisa had us talk to Ethan Greer, who we sent all of our inspection reports to. He stated that he would have a meeting with us all, and I have called him several times, emailed him several times. Crickets. Have not heard from him. Then had called City Manager Tom Doherty a couple of times. Finally went down to the City Hall last Friday, and he said... I'm sorry, I'm very emotional. This is my home, and these are all of our homes. He said that he was going to check with Ethan. I called him twice today. Finally, he called me back and told me that there was nothing that the city could do. We all spent $700 to $1 million on these houses, less than a year ago. I'm extremely disappointed in the city of Fairview that they won't step up and help us. We're not asking for a lot. We're asking for the builder to help us and to fix our homes. We were told that in the past Ethan has shut down the builders in the past until they did the right thing and fixed our homes. It fixed the homes. Tom Doherty told me today that we weren't going to do that. These are not small issues. These are costing us $40,000 to $100,000 to fix our homes in less than a year. See, on the agenda that DRB Brightland is here tonight, and I want them to hear our story because they're not going to do anything about it. They say it's our issue. The mold is our issue. The structural is our issue. We didn't build these homes.
Thank you. Your three minutes is up.
We just want them to do the right thing, and we want the city of Fairview to do the right thing and to help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Brian Lemain.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian Lemain, 7231 Richveil Drive and Richveil Estates. We purchased our home on 12/24, moved in on 2/25. Since that day of the move-in, this house has been an ongoing nightmare, never-ending, like every week. It also has issues ranging from major electrical safety issues, structural issues, paint, flooring. I could go on and on. Even just the other day, an 8-by-12 hole in our floor that we... Flooring was a little soft. Flooring guy came in, didn't have a patch to the floor. That's the second hole in the floor. Just about everything. Oh, yeah, and then the mold also that they will not fix. Speaking of mold, we live next to Lot 6. That is still for sale. It's one of their spec homes, built at the same time as our home. In July, June-July, it was under contract. I spoke to the inspector, and it finally went out of contract due to major structural mold-water issues. 44% moisture in the basement of a house seven months old. I have hundreds of pictures documenting this. Now, they tell us it's not their fault. They fixed their own home. That would be, to me, an admit of guilt because they want to sell that house. And then the new owner is stuck with it. Sorry, I'm a little emotional too. Trying to stay calm here. And that's because of their poor build quality. Also, over the past nine months, I've retired, and I'm around the neighborhood all the time. I watch these people work. Materials they use sit out in the water. I've seen them put muddy, moldy trusses and things into their houses. They also break lots of OSHA safety rules. I've already turned them in once. I have hundreds of pictures. I can do it again. And the only reason I know that is I'm a retired OSHA compliance instructor. I talked to a lot of the subs, and they always tell me, "Yeah, they take shortcuts. They're all about the dollar." They won't do it the right way. In closing, I would not wish this home on any of you, anybody, not even my worst enemy. I just, it's been a total nightmare, total stressful. I built houses, bought houses all over the country in the last 50 years. I've personally built them before. This is the worst nightmare ever. So what we're asking for is, we're not asking for anything big. We just want a safe, healthy house to live in that we purchased. So please do the right thing, City of Fairview, DRB Brightland. Fix this stuff and go forward and make the neighborhood great.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the time.
Next is Jason Keir.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jason Keir. I live at 7241 Richveil Drive. I just want to piggyback off a lot of what I think has already been said in that we are also suffering from some fairly complicated and severe structural issues at our home that we just paid, you know, $150,000, $170,000 for. And we're already in the bucket looking at bills of having to pay $70,000, $80,000, $90,000 to rectify these situations. I am not a young man. I'm nearing retirement age. I worked for the federal government, and I'm looking to have to pull out money from my retirement account to pay for this. It's just not right. We've got an inch-and-a-half to a two-inch sag in our house. The floors are sagging into the center of it. We've got cracks developing along the joints of our doorways and our jams where the drywall and the caulking is cracking, literally outwards into the rest of the house. The house bounces when we walk through it, and we're not running and playing like kids. We're just walking from the kitchen to the living room. I would like to caution the committee just to take pause, possibly. If it's too late for us to have our homes repaired, let's think about the next people that come in and buy these homes, and think about their futures and the problems that they're going to have. Right now, you've got a dozen homes. What are we going to have when they start building the other homes? Are we going to have 30 more homes that have the same issues? 70 more homes? I don't know. Maybe they've changed their plans. Maybe they've bettered their quality control. I'll read a few lines from Brightland Home DRB's website. "The Brightland Home families of brands is proud to be the gold standard in new construction homes and customer experience." Not my experience. "And built to last." Hmm, okay. "And they have a shared passion for design, precision, and service." And these are not the experiences that we're getting from the companies as we're trying to fix these issues. Mold, the structural, the electrical. I've got a sagging concrete walkway that is leaning probably a good two inches because... I'd just like to see that we are managed to some degree to be able to rectify these situations and be able to live our lives in our beautiful homes in this beautiful city that we all chose to settle into.
Thank you.
Next is Jody Keir.
Good evening, actually. I just wanted to say that I love the opening prayer.
Okay, take your time.
My husband pretty much said it all, but we had a foundation specialist come in, and he told us we needed 36.
So the structural issue, the sagging of the floors, the gentleman who managed the inspection in Houston, he wants to put in three additional girders with 36 some odd jacks underneath the house to push it back up so that we have a level floor. I've surveyed the inside of the house with a rotating laser survey that shoots a solid red line around the house, and you can go in with a ruler and you can measure changes in the elevation, and it's sagging. And this gentleman wants $77,000 just to rectify the situation for like $800,000.
And that's not the only issue we have. We also have mold issues, and they've had to fix areas underneath the crawl space where there was water intrusion. Here's a list of all the things they have yet to complete. And I just, I am really upset, and this just shouldn't happen in a $900,000 home. This just shouldn't happen. Brand-new home. It's not right. It's not justice. It's dishonest. And we just want Brightland Homes and DRB to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Next is David DeBoat.
From Richveil Drive. And I'm a professional builder. I build like DoD facilities, you know, like 300, $500 million buildings. And I want to, and I told them that when I first came in, because I was living in, I just got out here in July. I was living out there in Dallas, working on the F-22 Raptor. So what I'm doing right now is, I'm not certified in here, but I told them, I said, "My floor is damaged underneath the house, and there's like a lot of cracks in these main beam splits." You know, there's like a lot of cracks in them, and the floor is bouncing all the time. And then in some of the beams, when they put spacers in them, they didn't even put the spacers where they are, so they're sagging. So my floor is really weak, and my drywall continues to crack downstairs. And then when they looked at the mold underneath, it was only like 19%, but inside the house, it was 1,000% on the first floor because there's something wrong with the air conditioning and the venting system inside there. So I'm going to have to spend like $40,000, $50,000 to get that out of the way because it wasn't coming in from underneath the house. It was something coming in from the venting because there's no mushrooms or nothing, because a lot of people have mushrooms and stuff coming up through their house. But what ours is, is like it's like coming through the vents, and it's like 1,000 downstairs. So I have to leave the house for five days. But that's it. So we got a lot of structural issues, and what's causing the venting issues is something from the air conditioning system, and it's coming through the vents, and it's coming up through there. It's not underneath the house. That's it.
Thank you.
Last is Raj Gill.
My name is Raj Gill. Address 724012 Heights Loop. Like my other neighborhoods, I'm facing the same issues. I bought my house last year September 30, 2024, and during the 11-month inspection, we found mold, fungus, and falling... Installation was falling badly, and also I had issues with the outside siding, you know, so that moisturizers keep coming inside. So I requested Brightland DRB Homes to fix these issues, but nobody, you know, come to me. Nobody replied, any messages, emails, you know. They just sent me a after-one-year warranty pamphlet, and the pamphlet was showing they are not going to cover any like crawl space issues like water, moisturizer, mold. I have two kids, you know, so they are small kids, and I afraid of mold, and, you know, I spent out of my saving to fix the mold, but my outside siding issues still remain the same. So I'm requesting the Fairview City and also the DRB Brightland kindly please address our issues and fix all the problems. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last. Thank you all for coming out. We appreciate it. Sure?
We're just looking to the city to help us fight and just keep ourselves whole. We're not prepared to take on a big corporation, a big housing development company that's just going to put us off and put us off. And so it's your problem. We're not going to deal with this here. Look at this clause. Look at that clause. We're looking for support, for guidance, for mentoring, for some kind of direction from the city to help us rectify the situation. I don't know what that looks like. But if there were an opportunity outside of this venue to be able to meet, to discuss, and work through issues, I know we'd all be happy to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting, the regular meeting for November 18th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve agenda? Second.
Callie Pate. Ms. Hal, if you'll call a vote, please.
Ms. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Shillings?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Pate?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October, the regular October 14th, 2025 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for October?
Second.
Pate McDonald?
Mr. Pate?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Shillings?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. 8-0. Moving on to old business, none tonight. Moving on to item eight, new business. Item A, PC Resolution, PC 4625. Final plat, Phase 5 of Richveil Subdivision, MAP 43, parcel 23, acreage 17.41, current zoning R20, POD, property owner Brightland Homes of Tennessee LLC. Motion. Do I have a motion to discuss?
So, motion to approve so we can discuss? Motion to approve.
Dawson Schilling? All right. Staff report?
Mr. Adam Sanders, on behalf of Brightland Homes of Tennessee, has submitted a final plat for Phase 5 of the Richveil Estates PUD subdivision. Phase 5 of the Richveil Estates Residential Subdivision contains 39 single-family detached residential lots on 17.41 acres. Additionally, Phase 5 will extend one public right-of-way, Richveil Drive, that was created in Phase 1 and 2 of Richveil Estates. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the final plat for Phase 5 of Richveil Estate subdivision in order to create 39 single-family detached residential lots, extend one public right-of-way, and install all necessary water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure and related easements as resubmitted on October 24th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Is there someone associated or representing the project that would like to speak about it?
My name's Andy Davidson, Vice President of Land Development, DRB Nashville. Certainly not the guy you want to be speaking to about any structural issues with the home. That being said, I do know that our team has reached out multiple times to the members of the Richveil Association. I don't have a good update on that for everybody this evening, but I do understand everybody's concerns. That being said, for the plating requirements, we've set a reclamation bond, and we adhere to all the standards for the development, which, in my personal opinion, is separate from Phase 1 through 4 of that development. So I know our team. We have a dedicated team. I know they'll take your concerns seriously. Yeah, I understand that, but...
Chair, you need to assert yourself.
Sure.
I've heard these people speak, and I feel badly for them. I don't know anything about it, but we are past that part of the meeting, and we have business at hand. This is the final plat for Phase 5. It has nothing to do with the first four phases. If you want me to speak to it, I'm happy to do so when we get to it.
Sure.
But it's inappropriate at this point.
Understood.
I'm trying to be respectful to everybody here. I just, Phase 5, I do feel is separate to their concerns.
Sure. Any questions or comments from the Planning Commission?
Chair, if I may?
Mr. McDonald?
Mr. Carter, I guess this question will be for you. In light of the discussion from citizens' comments regarding... I mean, it's obviously directly related to the applicant currently in front of us with this. Is there any...
For this body, the Planning Commission, those comments really need to be directed to the Board of Commissioners, not the Planning Commission. Those comments should have nothing to do with your consideration of Phase 5, the final plat, in front of you. If the plat meets all of the city's requirements, and that's what I understand from staff report, then it should be approved. If it doesn't meet the requirements, then you should have a robust discussion, discuss where it falls short, and then you may have a basis to disprove it. But those comments, I heard them. If they're true, that's a terrible situation, but there are remedies. Those are not remedies. They seek through a planning, the homeowners would seek through a planning commission. They would seek it through an attorney that they could hire together and perhaps, you know, decide on a legal remedy. But those are not something for this planning commission to take into their own hands. It's way outside your authority and lane. And so I think it's inappropriate to even discuss them as part of this application.
Thank you. No further questions for me.
All right, anyone else have questions? All right, hearing none. Ms. Hal, if you will, call a vote, please.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Shillings?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. Pate?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Abstain.
Right, motion passes, 7-1. All right. Next item on the agenda, item B, PC Resolution, PC 4725. Final plat, Hatcher Heights Subdivision, MAP 42, parcel 17 and 18, acreage 15.68, current zoning RS15, property owner Innovative Construction Company LLC.
Make a motion to approve PC 4725?
Second.
Callie McDonald? All right, Mr. Greer, if you will read us the staff report.
T-Squared Engineering, on behalf of Innovative Construction Company LLC, has submitted a final plat for Hatcher Heights Residential Subdivision that contains 29 single-family detached residential lots on 15.68 acres. Additionally, the Hatcher Heights Residential Subdivision will create one new public right-of-way, Hatcher Heights Drive, create five open spaces, and install all necessary water, wastewater, stormwater, infrastructure, and related easements. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the final plat for Hatcher Heights Subdivision in order to create the 29 single-family detached residential lots, create one new public right-of-way, five open spaces, and install all necessary water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure.
Thank you. Is there anyone here tonight associated or representing the project?
Yes, my name is Louis Sleren, and I'm with T-Square Engineering, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you. Anyone on the Planning Commission have any questions? All right, hearing none. Ms. All right, hearing none, Ms. Howe, if you will, call a vote, please.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Ullis?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes, eight, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item C, PC Resolution, PC 4825. Residential Development Plan, The Cove. MAP 18, parcel 31. Acreage 28.75. Current zoning RS15. Property owner, North Cut Custom Homes.
Make a motion to approve PC 4825? Second.
Callie Schilling? All right, Mr. Greer, if you'll give us staff report, please.
Kail Newport with M2 Group has submitted, on behalf of North Cut Custom Homes, a residential development plan for The Cove. You saw a conceptual plan of this last month, which is a residential subdivision that contains 50 single-family detached residential lots, two new public rights-of-way, six open spaces, and one pump station lot, and all necessary stormwater, water, and wastewater infrastructure. The six open spaces contain 2.17 acres, the largest open space is 1.37 acres, and contains both the male kiosk as well as the location for a sanitary pump station, that is a required improvement per the Water Authority of Dixon County. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the residential development plan for The Cove residential subdivision to create a 50-lot, single-family detached residential subdivision, create two new public rights-of-way, create six open spaces, create one pump station lot, and all necessary utilities, water, sewer, and stormwater, as resubmitted on October 27th.
Thank you. Is there anyone here tonight representing the project that would like to speak? If you will state your name and address, please.
Kail Newport with M2 Group, we are at 1881 General George Patton Drive in Franklin. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Chair? Question?
Of course, Mr. Ritt?
At our last meeting, I asked the builder developer if the house directly to the south of the subdivision was on city water or if they were on well water. Do you have an answer for that?
We were never able to find whether they were on city or well, but we have, we have no expectation that any surface grading activities would disturb any subsurface aquifers.
Okay, because as my concern is, that building construction would affect a well-water recipient south of that.
So, in our, this will be forthcoming, what we will work through staff, through our construction plans, our erosion prevention sediment control plans have routed all of the stormwater to the confluence of the site up there, kind of by the open space. So, there will be a diversion, so that runoff is not going straight from disturbed soil on our site to the neighboring property to the south.
Okay, thank you.
When you were here last, we had talked about putting a buffer between the homes that are kind of on Crowcut, and I saw a note where the dash line is supposed to remain open, so isn't clear if there is going to be a buffer or not?
As, our understanding is that the, the buffer along those rear lots that will have the back of their house facing Crowcut Road is not a specific requirement, and it is the builder's intention to install, you know, some sort of semi-opaque buffer between the road and the houses, think that'd be beneficially, beneficial for the homeowner and for whoever's driving down the road, so they're not looking at that kind of stuff. But, in an effort to not place those restrictions on those lots, that's something that'll be installed along with the landscaping of the homes.
What is the definition of a semi-opaque buffer?
There's a lot of, I'm sure it's probably listed, I don't know that it's necessarily listed in Fairview's code. Every municipality, it seems, is sometimes a little different, I'd have to defer to, maybe, maybe the staff would be able to help with the definition of that.
Ms. Ullis, we do not currently have a definition for semi-opaque.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, so you said it may or may not be put in, right? So, is that, is that what your comment was?
The builder intends to install it, yes.
Okay, they will?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will note, along those lines, their lot diagrams that they have shown for their, on the bottom right-hand corner of this plan, their typical perimeter lot, so they're zoned RS15 here, and their rear setback is 20 feet. For their perimeter lots, they have moved that rear setback to 35 feet to allow for an additional space there along the entire perimeter of this project. And so, I believe that their intent doing that was to meet some of the Planning Commission's recommendations with their conceptual plan, and showing that along the perimeter, they are increasing their setback so that they're not encroaching on any of the adjacent properties or the road.
Any other questions?
Yes, so what remedy do we have if they intend to put it in, but they don't put it in? He says they intend to put it in, that doesn't mean they're going to put it in.
You're correct, Mr. Callie. There's no requirement today to have a landscape buffer when a single-family development is adjacent to single-family homes. There could be a condition of approval placed on this development.
Madam Chair, I have a question for staff.
Mr. Pape?
Is there, is there a buffer that is defined in our code that would be appropriate if we were to place a condition on it, that you guys think would be appropriate, a landscape buffer or something? That we could reference?
If I may, the applicant... I didn't catch your name, so, I don't, I don't play games very well, do you intend to put a landscape buffer in or not?
Yes, yes.
Are you adverse to them adding a condition of requiring a landscape buffer?
No, we're not.
Okay, and what do you propose as far as a landscape buffer?
We would have to look into exactly what it looks like, but I believe the last that we spoke, we would have some kind of split rail fence along the rear of those yards.
How wide?
It can, it can be up to 35 feet, or 30 feet wide, however, sorry, I'm trying to read my paper here, we have a 35-foot rear setback on those lots, so at least that width will be available for landscape.
Okay, so, they're not adverse to it, so, if you, if, it sounds like they're agreeable to it, they're not adverse to it, and, and so, you heard what I did, so do your thing.
I make a motion to amend the motion to approve PC 48-25 to add a requirement for a landscape buffer along any lots that either back up to or have a side yard on Crowcut Road, a minimum of 20 feet wide, and for staff to establish final requirements of the amount of landscaping in that buffer.
Second.
Who is that? Mr. Ritt? All right, Pape, Ritt? Any other questions before we call a vote on the amendment? All right, Ms. Howe, if you'll call that vote?
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Ms. Ullis?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
All right, the amendment on the table, pass, eight, zero. All right, now, if there are no further questions, we will call a vote on the original vote. Hearing none, Ms. Howe, if you will.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Sure, Mr. McDonald.
I just want to clarify something, and this might be best answered by Commissioner Pape, just something I'm noticed and curious, so, the, you look at the typical interior lot, typical perimeter lot, the typical perimeter, interior lot has a 20-foot space from the back of the dwelling to the back of, to the rear property line, correct? And then the perimeter lots are 35 feet?
That sounds right, yeah.
Should we, should we require the landscaping buffer to just be 15 feet to allow for both the, the same amount of backyard to be available to interior and perimeter lots? Because this way, we're kind of taken away, just, I don't know if it matters or not, just something I thought.
I mean, I specified along Crowcut Road, so I don't think it would affect any of the interior lots?
No, this was just so the, so the perimeter lots match the interior lots, as far as backyard space available to the property owner.
May I add something to that? So, the, the reason for the larger setback on the perimeter lots, one of the reasons is that that's also being used as a drainage soil, so it is a minimum building setback line, but it double functions as a public drainage easement. Just FYI.
So, the 20-foot is fine, then? Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Howe, if you will call a vote on the original motion.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritt?
Aye.
Ms. Ullis?
Aye.
Mr. Pape?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Original motion passes, eight, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item D, PC Resolution, PC 4925. Residential Development Plan, Fairview 17. MAP 42, parcel 132. Acreage 17.74. Current zoning RS8. Property owner, Christine Bryson. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve PC 4925? Second.
Callie Dawson? All right, Mr. Greer, if you will give us the staff report, please.
Jason Stivers with Stivers Land Surveying has submitted, on behalf of the property owner, Christine Bryson, a residential development plan for Fairview 17, which is a residential subdivision that contains 45 single-family detached residential lots, one new public right-of-way, three open spaces, and one pump station lot, and all necessary stormwater, water, and wastewater infrastructure. The three open spaces contain 6.22 acres, with the largest open space containing 6.06 acres. The largest open space is in the southern portion of the property and contains a, the floodway and floodplain areas, as well as a detention basin and an existing cemetery. The property is currently zoned RS8 and contains a total of 17.74 acres. The subdivision will develop 15.7 acres of the property. The property is located on FEMA FIRM Panel 47187C0151F, and a portion of the property is located within a flood hazard area. All surrounding properties are located within the Fairview municipal boundaries. The property to the north is zoned commercial general, while the properties to the south and west are zoned RS40. The property to the east is zoned R20, and property to the east is vacant, while the properties to the south and west contain single-family detached residences. Property to the north is currently vacant, but has been approved for a townhouse development. The 2040 Fairview Forward Plan classifies this property as residential transition, which lists appropriate zoning districts as RS15, RS8, which this has been zoned RS8, RS5, and RM8 with a PUD. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the residential development plan for the Fairview 17 subdivision to create a 45-lot, single-family detached residential subdivision, create one new public right-of-way, create three open spaces, create one pump station lot, and install all necessary utilities, as resubmitted on October 31st.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Is there anyone here tonight associated or representing the project that would like to speak? If you will state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name's Kevin O'Brien with CLQ Land, address is 6700 Tower Circle in Franklin, and happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Dawson?
Mr. Greer, was there any opportunity with this property to connect with Boone Road? I know that at one point, we kind of discussed...
We did discuss that at one point, and looking after they did a little bit more survey, and Mr. O'Brien can speak to some of this as far as the cemetery location and how that expanded through some of their surveying and data collection of the site, it has become infeasible to connect with the floodplain and the size of the cemetery location with their property frontage on Boone Street.
Madam Chair?
Want to, Kevin, if you want to explain maybe a little bit how the cemetery expanded?
Just, yeah, a little bit more color on what Ethan said, the cemetery is not something we actually knew existed before pursuing this site, and then through working with planning, we actually had some neighbors approach or approached through Ethan, expressing importance of kind of preserving the cemetery and its location, which, given that and the floodplain challenges, it felt we needed to leave that intact, in fact, actually buffer and preserve it, making the connection to Boone quite a challenge without disturbing that.
That's something, so you guys were considering that then, or at least looking at that opportunity before you discovered the cemetery?
We were, yeah.
Mr. O'Brien, so, you are going to sprinkle these homes, since it's one way in and one way out, which is what happens when there's that situation, right?
Yes, that's correct, and working with the fire chief, yep.
Yes, and then, also, I just want to say, I appreciate the fact that you were coming in as RS5 and you listened to the community when they expressed that they would like for the, it to be less dense, and you changed it to RS8, so I appreciate the way you work with the community and, and did that.
Thank you very much for those comments.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ritt?
Has there been a traffic study done in regards to this development?
There's not been a traffic study completed with this development, this development is, does not meet the threshold today that we have for a traffic study. Our threshold is 100 single-family units on a development, and this does not meet that threshold.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Brien, I see an area where it's future right-of-way and pedestrian connection, is that for a future development, or what is that intention for?
Sure, and, and maybe Ethan wants to add in, but this is something for future planning that was really feedback we got with staff, that we just wanted to protect and preserve, obviously, with everything coming at the town center, that we left that option open. Ethan, I don't know if you want to add any more color to that, but it was something we agreed with and were happy to, to put in there.
So, the property directly to the west on here... So, the property directly to the west on here, uh, touches Fairview Boulevard, Highway one hundred, and the red light that is going in at city center is directly in front of that property, and so we wanted to have a, um, reserved area if the property to the west ever develops, that we have a future piece of connection to where the folks that live in this development could access Highway one hundred and city center directly at a red light. Um, it also would provide, this connects into Cedar Crest Town Home Development, so it would provide a red light access point for Cedar Crest as well. And so, that was the intention of our staff, looking at that, and that property is likely to be developed as it sits along Highway one hundred, um, and wanted to make sure that there was a connection point there planned today for many years in the future when it gets done.
How will that be finished out?
Yeah, I've got our civil, Cole, I may call you up to the stand here, he's with the FCG consultant to help with some of the more technical questions here.
Can you clarify your question, Ms. Shulist?
When, when the project turns over, what will it look like? Will it be noticeably a fu- for future?
No, it will not be noticeably, there's a detention basin there, uh, and this would just be a platted easement for future across that. Uh, once that property to the west would be developed, that is where that detention basin outfalls to, and so that detention basin would have to be shifted through construction in conjunction with the property to the west, and so this would just be a platted, uh, future right-of-way.
Answers that question? Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Pate.
Just a comment, more than a question, for staff. When you look at the resource, sorry, Resource Protection Plan, you know, there's yellow all over it with the twenty percent slopes, and there's notes on there referencing the stormwater regulations relative to steep slopes, and I just, you know, we, so we now have a zoning ordinance that addresses steep slopes, we have a subdivision ordinance that addresses steep slopes, and a stormwater ordinance that addresses steep slopes, they all contradict each other. They're using the stormwater ordinance, in this case, to be able to grade all over the twenty percent slopes. The zoning ordinance wouldn't allow that, you know, my experience is that typically the more stringent, if there's conflicts, the more stringent govern. Um, I just say all this to make sure we are in the middle of rewriting our zoning ordinance, we've got to clean this up, make sure that the new zoning ordinance clarifies what we expect or don't expect with steep slopes, and that we state clearly in that, that that is now going to be the governing part of the ordinance moving forward.
Noted, thank you.
Right. Any other questions? Hearing none, Ms. Howell, if you will, call a vote, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Ritt.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Mr. Pate.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda, item E, PC Resolution, PC fifty twenty-five, adopted Planning Commission schedule for February of twenty twenty-six through February of twenty twenty-seven.
Motion approve PC fifty twenty-five.
Second.
Kelly Pape. Mr. Greer, if you will.
This is our schedule that we've put together for January of twenty-six, which was approved last year, and February twenty-six, which was approved last year, so really, it's March of twenty-six through February twenty-seven. The, um, dates have been checked against Williamson County Schools' calendar to make sure we're not having any, um, meetings on fall break, spring break, or any city observed holidays. You've seen this schedule before, we have an initial project submittal deadline, our staff meeting with the applicant, they receive staff comments back, they submit their final project submittal, we review their final project to determine if they, they have a submit, complete submittal, uh, then it goes into the Planning Commission packets, and we have work session dates available in our regular schedule, regular Planning Commission meeting dates available. Any questions that I may have missed the date or two, so take a look and make sure I haven't missed anything, but I think I got it all.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't think this is very, too big of an issue, Mr. Greer, but, uh, the staff meeting with applicant for January twenty-six is December sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Hey, Bo. Just the first line in, the January twenty-six.
Very top one of staff meeting.
That January date was approved last year at this time, good catch, we've only missed it for a year, but I will get it corrected, it is correct on the website for the January twenty twenty-six date.
And then you, um, it was just pointed out to me, the staff meeting with applicant and first staff comments for February twenty twenty-six are both January ninth, that seems like a quick turnaround.
That's correct, and that is due uh, that's just due to the timeline, the first Friday in January is January third, um, two days after New Year's, and so, we had moved that to January ninth to accommodate for folks who are likely out of town for New Year's. Again, that was done last year, for the January and February dates.
That is all, thank you.
Right. Other questions, comments? All right, hearing none, Ms. Howell, if you will, call a vote.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Pate.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ritt.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero. All right, next item on the agenda, item F, PC Resolution, PC fifty-one twenty-five, Acceptance of Infrastructure Adams Preserve Subdivision.
Motion approve PC fifty-one twenty-five.
Second.
Kelly Pape. All right, Mr. Greer, if you.
Me tonight.
Sorry, Curtis.
No worries. Uh, something I want to note, did a final inspection, uh, this evening for Adams Preserve Town Homes, and I did notice a section of Adams Drive that is not yet paved, um, that was missed on prior inspections, but the communications with the developer have been, been great, they've addressed all issues, and, you know, there were, there were a multitude of them at, at one point, so I have no doubt that they'll, they'll get that corrected between now and the next board commissioners meeting, but I just want to make you all aware of it, um, that, and I've also sent an email to them tonight, so that they are aware of it as well, just want to make note of that.
Okay. Questions?
Madam Chair.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Just a follow-up to that comment you made, um, how was that missed on initial inspection? That seems like a pretty obvious one.
There was a cross-issue between Elevate Gymnastics and Adams Preserve. We asked the two developers to get together and figure out who was going to pave which section because they both had one half of the road, and then, nothing came of that, and so, to be honest with you, just missed by my mistake, I mean, I didn't want to have to bring it up tonight, but during my final inspection, I realized that that still has not been done, so I wanted to make you all aware of it, um, but again, they've, they've been great to work with, uh, don't have a doubt that they'll get it corrected, so.
Thank you. Madam Chair, so I guess, so we're going on good faith, though, the Planning Commission is going on good faith that they're going to do this?
Sounds like if they don't do it, at the next Board of Commissioners, they can.
They should catch it.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, I see what you're saying, if you, if you're not comfortable, I could probably understand.
If it's, if it's done, it's done, if it's not, it's not.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, let me ask it a different way, we're not the final say, it's not fully accepted until the Board of Commissioners accept it, correct?
Yes, it's a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, thank, yes, sir, thank you. And you might even say, we, we don't recommend it under this certain current conditions, but if this is corrected, then we would, I, I'm not sure how you would like to provide that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
You can just provide the recommendation with the condition that it's corrected.
I make a motion to add a condition to PC fifty-one twenty-five that the final road paving is one hundred percent complete for acceptance. Second.
Pate McDonald. Any further questions or comments about that before we call the vote on that? All right, Ms. Howell, if you will.
Mr. Pate.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ritt.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero. All right. Next item on the agenda, item G, PC Resolution, PC fifty-two twenty-five, Acceptance of Infrastructure at Pennic.
Chair, just a point of clarification, I believe we voted on an amendment? We need to vote on the main motion prior to.
Oh, I thought it was just the, just a condition of approval to the original motion.
I think the, I think technically, Mr. Pape amended the, uh, amended the main motion, so we do need to vote on the main motion, I think that was your intent, Mr. Pape, wasn't it?
All right, so now we do another vote, is what I'm hearing, okay.
Just back to the main item as amended with the condition that Mr. Pape added, and it was approved by the Planning Commission.
All right, Ms. Howell, if you will, call that vote.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Pate.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ritt.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
All right, original motion passes eight zero. All right, next item on the agenda, item G, PC Resolution, PC fifty-two twenty-five, Acceptance of Infrastructure Pennic Place Subdivision. Do have a motion.
Make a motion, approve PC fifty-two twenty-five.
Second.
Kelly Pape. All right.
No issues with this one, apologies.
Okay. All right, any questions? Hearing none, Ms. Howell, if you will, call a vote.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Pate.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ritt.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero. Moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Reports for Discussion and Information, Sitting Planning Staff Development Code Update. Mr. Greer.
Know that you are all excited about this, as we are moving into an exciting time in Fairview and having this development code move forward. Uh, if you have the electronic version of the agenda, I have added three attachments to this line item for item nine. Of all the citizens' comments that we received, the Fairview Development Code, Public Draft with Staff Comments, and the Development Code Review Meeting Minutes, those were also, all three items were emailed to all the Planning Commission members and all the Board of Commissioners, uh, prior to this meeting, it did happen very shortly prior to this meeting, but it did happen prior. Um, the citizens' comments, I would like you, for, for all of you to read through them, there's a hundred and ninety-four pages of, uh, of items that were sent in, there are, uh, there was a large group that sent in a kind of form letter, that's about two pages, there were about fifty of those that sent in, so if you see duplicate items, I did just print them straight from my email, so you can see the, the address, they are bookmarked, so if you open it in a PDF viewer and open the bookmarks, you can go to, um, exactly anybody's comments, if you have received emails and wanted to know what they communicated to planning staff, you can go in and see exactly what, um, you know, Mr. Marshall Abbott sent in to the city of Fairview. Those documents are publicly available and open for everyone to review. We are anticipating having the final draft, um, back from TPUDC here shortly. Our plan as of today, prior to the Planning Commission meeting on December ninth, is to have a joint work session at five PM with the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners to review the final draft with TPUDC present to explain any questions that you may have. Uh, you do have our Corrections, Staff Comments that we sent back to them, and our Code Review Meeting Minutes where we discussed items, um, with our code group that reviewed that. Um, that's kind of all I have for an update, any questions that you all may have?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ritt.
So, in the event that the new code book is approved and published, what's the process in the future if we do notice something, I mean, it's, it's a behemoth, right, and what if there's something that comes up in the future that needs to be corrected or amended at some point, what's the process, just so we're, we're familiar as a, as a commission how to do that?
The process to amend the development code?
Correct, if we see something that, you know, is glaring, but we didn't see it in the initial scrub of everything.
The process would be to bring that to staff's attention, and then we would draft a resolution for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, it would have a first reading at the Board of Commissioners, and then, there would be a public hearing and a second and final read with the Board of Commissioners to make any amendments to a development code.
Adding to that, my recommendation would be for staff to collect several amendments, and, and there will be amendments, uh, Columbia adopted a code a few years ago, and they, every few months, they have a batch of amendments that are made, Spring Hill adopted their code in two thousand eighteen, and once or twice a year, they make amendments to it on things they discover or find, or that don't work, uh, Nolansville, Franklin, all, all the same way, and that's a common thing that happens, it's, it's a, a code that's created by humans, approved by humans, and humans will amend it, so.
So, do we establish a schedule of when we want to see amendments?
Uh, no, uh, staff will, staff will lead that process, when they get a handful and it makes sense, you, you don't want to be doing it every meeting.
Sure.
But they'll, they'll get a batch together, and then, uh, decide when it's appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Greer, um, if the general public wants to see all these emails of all the comments that have come in and, and the meeting minutes, where can they find those?
It is attached as to our agenda tonight.
So, just on the Fairview web, website?
It is on the Fairview website, on tonight's agenda, at the very bottom under number nine, just like everything else that we've gone through tonight, there are three attachments, one is called citizens' comments, the second is Fairview Development Code, Public Draft with Staff Comments, and the third item is Development Code Review Meeting Minutes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Pate.
Uh, quick, quick question, ties to the zoning ordinance, and it just literally came up tonight because of the public comments, obviously, certificate of occupancy is part of our zoning ordinance and what we require for that, um, do we require structural inspection reports before issuing a certificate, certificate of occupancy, and if not, we should certainly, after what we heard tonight, consider putting that into the zoning ordinance? And if not, we should certainly, after what we heard tonight, consider putting that into the zoning ordinance?
Today, we require that buildings be built to meet the International Code Council, International Residential Code, which we have now, the Board of Commissioners adopted back in July, I believe, the 2024 codes, not the 2018 codes. And so we require them to meet the codes. Our codes inspector, building inspector inspects to the code book and is the sole individual that inspects and issues certificate occupancies. For structural items, we do require that structures are submitted, structural items are submitted with their building permit and are reviewed during permitting. Obviously, what can be on a 2D sheet of paper, go into a 3D home. It's on our inspector to review those items and to review them in the field as they're being constructed. The overall piece of structural, though, is kind of a we review it from a plan review standpoint, and we review it from a field install standpoint.
And so we don't require any third-party certifications? Like, when I build a commercial building, usually I have to have my structural engineer certify that it has actually been constructed per the plans and specifications that meet code, so we're not doing- we don't have that, and that may be excessive for residential occupancy.
That is not required for residential construction. The builder takes on all the risk as far as residential construction, or the engineer that stamped the drawings. If there is an engineer that stamps the drawings.
Is there a certain percentage of homes, let's say there's 50 homes in a subdivision, is it all 50 homes must pass the code, or is it 10%? Or what's the criteria for meeting a code for occupancy?
Every home.
Yeah, it's 100%. If it's not built to the International Code Council codes, it does not, it receives a failed inspection with corrective items. Once those items are corrected, they can ask for a reinspection. If they're still not corrected, they will fail again. If they are corrected, they will pass their inspection. And there are multiple inspections that happen throughout the course of a building. I believe there's 11 that gets you from breaking ground on a house to a final inspection.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Greer, with the development code update?
I do not have any additional items for the development code update. I would love for you to review these three items that I've given you tonight. By the end of this week, I will have another public document that I will send out for all the citizens' comments and what our staff's response is for those comments. I'm about halfway through with getting all of that work together. With that noted, we also have a open position right now in our office for an associate planner. If any of you know anybody who wants to come work for the great city of Fairview, please submit your application to City Manager Tom Darty. You can drop it at City Hall. You can find it on our website. Our job has been posted now for, what, about a month? I think, close to it. And we are seeking applications desperately, so. Anybody that you know who's interested in coming to work for the city, who has expressed interest in seeing our city grow well, please send them our way. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Ethan, if we, do we feel that two hours is going to be sufficient to finish this?
I would encourage you all to review the items that are on here. Reach out to me with any questions that you have over the course of the next month. And two hours will probably be a good first start. If we're being honest. Optimistically, I would hope two hours is great, but I think it's a good document with how it's written, but, you know, realistically, two hours is probably a good first start.
So we've got, let's see. Basically, three weeks or so, right, to review?
Correct.
Okay. So if we don't finish, we can schedule a second date?
We can. I believe TPUDC for our contract has two meetings that they are supposed to come and attend during the adoption process, and so I believe we could schedule a second date if needed. I think for the Planning Commission, I know, you know, ultimately, this body's decision is to recommend or to not recommend the development code to the Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners will ultimately make all of the final decisions on if this code is adopted as it reads, or if any amendments or changes need to be made. And so from my perspective, this body, you've had the public draft since August. You now have our changes. There are not a significant amount of changes. I think there's somewhere around 100 changes in there from staff. And so we put those together through our staff. We met with the city of Columbia and looked through some of their challenges that they've had and things that they've changed, some of the items that they've had challenges with because TPUDC wrote their code as well. TPUDC was aware of some of those challenges and had already implemented them within our code. Within our code, my apologies. And so we didn't have a significant amount of items. We did hit it pretty hard on the client draft to make sure we got a clean public draft. And so from a Planning Commission standpoint, I would hope that the next three weeks and then a two-hour conversation is fairly sufficient to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And once we get to the Board of Commissioners, then I would believe at that point, since only two of you sit on the Planning Commission, and the other three members would probably like to have some opportunities to speak with TPUDC and gain some clarity in how this document operates.
As far as the document with the staff comments, I see, I don't see track changes, but I see arrows. Does that represent where changes have been made?
Yes, and the last two pages of the document, sorry, thank you for bringing that up. The last two pages of the document have all of the changes that we've made, all of the comments. If you want a quick reference.
I see.
It has the page label and then all, each comment that has been made on there. And I did notice as I was sitting here that it cut off some of our comments. I will get that clarified and corrected. And send it back out to you.
Thank you. Mr. Greer, any other updates from planning staff?
That's it.
Outside of the code development, development code?
That's it for tonight.
Okay. City Manager.
Thank you. I just want to set the record straight. We have been working on, we do have empathy for what's happening in in Richville, and I've been in, been working with Ethan, and Ethan's done the heavy lifting, but we have requested that all the inspections be sent to the planning staff. They have reviewed all those. I also asked them to make a list of options. They have done that, and he has emailed all the people that this is what we were going to do, and then he would email them back, yes.
Just for correction, they will receive an email tonight that have not sent it out.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't, yeah. So we're, so I have told, that's what I told the citizen that said we couldn't do anything tonight. That's what I told them that we were doing. And they would have an email stating some options and what the city can and cannot do. And we'll go from there, but it's, it gets touchy once you take ownership of a property, so we have to tread lightly. We can't just jump in there and go crazy like it's, we can't go, we don't have as much authority as during the building process. So anyway, I just appreciate everything y'all do, and and I normally don't speak during this, but I just want to set the record straight on that. Thank you.
Thank you. City Engineer.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. City Attorney. All right. Planning Commission Roundtable. We'll start at that end with Mr. Ritt.
I have nothing.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. A quick question, and I might have just missed this. When were, when was anybody of city staff of any capacity made aware of the issues in Richville? Like, when was the initial contact that we were made aware of it? Three weeks ago?
I was made aware on October 29th.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Saturday at 3:00 PM, it's a little bit of a journey. There's plenty of things to stop and visit on your way out there to and fro, but at Charlotte Middle School Football Field at 3 o'clock this Saturday, the group of eight, nine-year-old boys from this great city of Fairview are playing in the Super Bowl against Burns. Both teams are undefeated. Our Titans are an aggregate score of 320 to 0. They have not allowed a single point to be scored against them this season, which is quite remarkable when you think about children and much like herding cats, things can happen, so the fact that nothing has gotten through yet is pretty unreal. And it's just been a blast of a season, but if you don't have anything going on on Saturday, it would mean the world to those guys for you guys to come out and support it. 3:00 PM is kickoff for that game at Charlotte Middle. That is all.
Right. Mr. Kelly.
Just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and thanks to the staff for the hard work.
Mr. Pape.
Yeah, thanks to the staff for all the work on the zoning ordinance. I know it is a huge, huge lift, and everybody's putting a lot of effort into, so thanks for that. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and Vice Mayor McDonald, you may want to have your defensive coordinator talk to the Titans a little bit, see if he can help.
Mr. Dawson.
Commissioner Pape, thank you. Counsel for that little alley-oop there with Roberts Rules and that amendment assistant, I was getting stuck, and you got me across the finish line. Thank you. For the folks that came to provide public comment, thank you for coming. And certainly, my prayers are with you for resolution. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Schilling. All right. Mayor Anderson.
So the Richville development is just a beautiful neighborhood. The developer did such a beautiful job with the development. This is a time of roundtable where, you know, I can speak my heart, and that's what I'm going to do. Our homes are the single, I would say, the single most expensive thing that we buy as a family. And it really disturbs me. You know, when there's one home in a development that's having issues, that's disturbing, but when there's upwards of 15 and possibly more, I just, I have a real problem with that. I know that, you know, our city staff and the city as a whole, I don't know all the logistics in and out of what can be done and not done, but you are our neighbors. You moved into that development expecting these 900,000 to over a million-dollar homes to be built to a standard that, you know, little things that can be fixed, that's one thing, but big structural and issues with mold, that's just very disturbing. I don't even know what to say. You know, me as Lisa, I would say, I don't want this person building in our community. Me up here, I have to follow guidelines as to the rules and regulations, and if they meet things, then, you know, we have to approve. I couldn't, I wasn't allowed to disapprove tonight, but I made the choice to abstain making a statement that this is not okay with me. I will, I've spoken to you on several occasions, reached out to city staff to see what there, you know, what could be done, hoping that there was, you know, something, and, you know, I don't know all the logistics, but maybe stopping work until things get rectified. That was kind of in my heart, but maybe not the legal way to go about it. But I promise you, I will research this more now that I know that we can't stop them from working, and I will find out if there's, you know, I can find out what can be done. Maybe not through the city, but maybe just, you know, other ways. But I think you coming up here and speaking tonight, we're televised, we're televised throughout this community, we're televised through Williamson County, and it's on YouTube. And I think just the word of mouth is going to give other people some information that maybe they might need. I'm not going to stop working with you guys because you are neighbors. This is our community, and this is not me speaking like because I want to, you know, I'm not that person. I really, this really disturbs me, and what y'all are going through hurts my heart. So I will stand with you guys, and I'm just hoping that we can figure out a way. And thank you so much for coming tonight and letting us know what's going on. And for all of the future, you know, we've got a lot of builders that are hometown builders, that they build here, they've been building here for years, and we know their work, and we know that they do a great job, and we've got new builders who've come in, and, you know, a lot of them do a great job. I expect all of the builders to do a great job and build homes that our neighbors in our community can be proud of. And they don't have to open their life savings to make financial output to correct things that in that first year, I don't, I don't know how that works, but I know that I thought in the first year, you know, they had to fix certain things. And I would hate to think that you're reaching out, and they're just, I'm not saying they are, I'm just saying, I would hate to think that they are stalling to get that first year out of the way, and then, hey, we don't have to do anything anymore. That is not okay. And I just hope the builders that come to our city and build in our city after a beautiful development's put together and turned over to a builder to build the homes, that they do better. Congratulations on the wedding. I know that you've got to leave out early in the morning. Thank you all for staying, and I'm right next door. I live down the street, and I'm here, so I've got a triangle. Please, we're going to stay in touch.
Thank you.
And thank you guys for coming. Thank you to our staff with the codes ordinance. That's been a long, hard task, but with that, we need, we need some accountability with building. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, thank you again for your continued work with the development code and putting together all the citizens' comments and all the change, track changes and everything. That's very helpful and I will spend the next three weeks looking through that. For the citizens that came tonight, I know it may seem like we don't care because in our, in our venue or in our forum, it's not, it's not really a, an open forum, right? It's, you know, we're, as Mayor Anderson said, we're, we're looking at things through a legal lens and sometimes it's, we don't get the opportunity to, to have a, an open dialogue about things. But we hear you and we, most of us, I'm sure, have been homeowners at one time or another and we totally understand what you're going through. Some of us have even worked for home builders and know the struggle of what that's like. So, I hope things are resolved in your favor. And I will be, hope, I'll be listening for how things turn out for you all. But everyone, have a great Thanksgiving and we will connect again in December. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
So, moved.